Good evening, thank you all for coming. Please rise and join me with the flag so I can...
Ah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation through God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where is Mr. Sandstrom?
So, nothing more.
Okay. For the record, all council are present with the exception of Mr. Sandstrom, who I would accept a motion to excuse his absence.
I make a motion to excuse Councilman Sandstrom tonight.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Lemley, to excuse Councilmember Sandstrom's absence. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Next up, item three, we have the consent calendar, A through E. And before we go there, I would remind council, we had some complaints the last couple nights about speaking into the mic so that people in the audience can hear, so if you'd just kind of emphasize that, keep it nice and close so everybody can hear, I'd appreciate it.
I move we accept the consent calendar, A through E.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Dunley and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to accept the consent calendar items, A through E. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries. That brings us to item four, public comment. For those of you who would like to make public comment this evening, please come up one at a time. You have three minutes at the podium, and remember, you're addressing the council. So, do you have any takers for public comment? Tony, please give your name and address for the record.
Tony, Brian, 714 Sapporo, Cedar Valley. I'm asking when are they going to put the traffic light back up at Metcalf and Woodworth? I just about got teed on in that thing because people can't seem to see the stoplight, there's a stop sign, or don't pay attention to it. But I guess it came down when the building broke.
Well, that's true. Mark, did you want to comment on that real quick?
I'll have to check on it. I know we lost a pole over there, so it may be related to that, but I'll check on that too.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Anyone else for the public comment period? Mary.
Good evening, my name is Mary Anderson. I live at 928 Beachley Road here in Cedar Valley. A quick question, will there be a separate public comment time on the transportation bill, or is this it?
Yes, there'll be a public hearing.
Okay, so there will be time for people to come up and speak about that.
Correct.
Okay, I have a request, I have a request regarding the adoption of this number eight on your agenda, ordinance mending SWMC 9.40.010 to include drinking in public as a crime. Could we please amend that to drinking alcohol in public as a crime? I'm serious, because...
I would make a motion that we add that word, please.
Thank you. Because I envision people with their bottles of water, like, you know, being accosted, "You're drinking in public." I know it seems silly, but precision is important, and words are important.
I believe it's in that section of the code where it's obvious, but we can certainly make a change there, and as it's new business, that's what we're here to do.
Thank you.
Check these things out.
I have one further item that I would like to stick about. It came to my attention after the last library public hearing that apparently there is no representation for the citizens of Cedar Valley according to the new ILAs that have been proposed. And I wish to put that out, that that is a concern to many citizens, that there is no representation on the county board, on the Central Skagit Library District Board. There's apparently no provision for Cedar Valley citizen representation on that board. And I would like to state for the record that I think that there should be. If we're going to own 41% of it, then by jingo, we should have 41% representation on the board. That's all I have to say tonight at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else for the public comment period? Oh, you got beat, Dennis, but you can be next.
Philip Murray, 223 State Street, Cedar. I'm proposing that you look at possibly on State Street on the south side, putting angled parking in and take away the parallel parking. That way, you gain more parking spaces, and you will slow traffic down on that street because that thing has become like a drag strip through there, maybe because the one blinking light isn't on anymore in the corner of Third Street. And, I mean, it's been hot out, I've had my windows open, I can't even hear my TV. These cars with the mufflers on that really rap out, and motorcycles, they're hitting three gears, I mean, full throttle through there. And I have not seen any police around since six o'clock on. It seems like they just haven't been out there much, not like they used to be. And, there was something else, but it can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Question, yeah. Mark, would that street be wide enough to accommodate angled parking on one side?
I will check. I do not believe it is. I've looked at that a number of times, and I think it's only 15, six feet, curb to curb, maybe less.
What's the requirement?
We need 16 feet from the curb for angled parking at the standard 45. They can be angled a little less or more. And then you do need some clear zone behind them as well, usually a 12-foot lane, and then the two lanes of parking on the other side would take...
And as you're finding downtown, us being a blue collar logging community, there's a lot of big trucks, so you get tellings of those trucks sticking out on that street.
Probably the biggest problem on states, the volume of traffic. We have close, we have close to 9,000 vehicles a day using that part, and I know I've ran into this in the past where a state route was a main street in one of my previous jurisdictions, and the state wouldn't approve it if you had 10,000 or more vehicles to go, or use parallel parking, or angled parking. But I can look into it, I do think it's too narrow, but I will look at it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else for the public comment period? Dennis?
Hi, I'm Dennis O'Neil, I reside at 109 Telkot Street, Cedar Valley. I had something to discuss, and of course, I oversaw, convinced everything, so apologize for that. I did notice that, again, a year ago, we were talking about, well, maybe it's less than that, about eight months ago, we were talking about crosswalks, and how people are coming into crosswalks and practically running over people, and I see that, I don't know if the police is not enforcing it anymore, or not watching it, but boy, it sure picked up again. Those cars are cruising right through the crosswalks, they don't care. I don't see anybody ever getting ticketed. I'd be curious if anybody has gotten ticketed in the last six months on crosswalk violations, both walking or driving. It's just, there's nobody out there in the streets. I've already seen them for a while, I was seeing a lot of police cars, police officers out, and I haven't seen them lately. Maybe they're there, maybe they're picking them up, but boy, the visibility is pretty little. The second thing is, we seem to be getting an awful lot of fireworks going off in our area, and I noticed that over by Brenda's place, it looks like somebody, I saw the flash, it was loud, they liked dynamite going off, and they blew up, I think they blew up that thing that I built for my ex, my former neighbor who's deceased now. And they actually blew it right off the stands over there. I don't know if the person living there in that little house, behind Cook's old house, but, you know, there's been really a big incident. I jumped in my pickup and tried to find these clouds a little bit at high school, and of course, they're always gone. Looking, looking for this...
Still across the parking, for the crossroad logging.
Yeah, over there, yeah, I saw the flashes over there too. And I don't know what the person could do about it, but Doug Woods, years ago, said that he can't enforce partial ban on fireworks. Council hadn't proved it anyway, we put no teeth into what they did pass, and he sat right there and said, "Don't pass that law, I can't enforce it." But the council, in its infinite wisdom, passed it anyway. And just unfortunately, we seem to be the only town around here that seems no better than Burlington, or Seattle, or any other town about these fireworks. And we're back to it again, and we're going to be back to it next year, because nobody has any courage to step forward and say, "Take away their firecrackers." You know, you either have a law that's pretty much black and white, or you try to deal with the gray areas, and the police department's got to be frustrated, they go out and try to pick these guys up, they're hard to find, and you get pulled up, and they, then they switch from firecrackers to just the noiseless ones, and they're out there doing their thing. When Tom was on there, you know, he was talking about, Tom Storbs, I believe, he was left, he was talking about how it was just really, he didn't really want to deprive his grandkids of firecrackers because he remembered that. And my thought is, you know, you want to do that, and if it's legal, go out to the rodeo grounds or someplace, get together and blow your head off if you want to, but don't do it in my neighborhood. They're heading off those things, I know they're legal. I'd like to see a larger fine come out, so that if you did go to all the effort to track these kids down, or young adults, that it would hurt them as much as it bothers me in the middle of the night to have that sucker go off. And if for a couple of you up there, or are you now...
Thirty seconds.
You know, you're running out of time to do anything on this except to sit down in the bar with everybody else, complain about the fact there's no laws to stop this. But it's unfortunate because your time's running out to make an impression, Rick, and others. So, you know, do what you can to get that done. I know it's real hard to get anything on the agenda, because some people don't like to have things on the agenda. I mean, I know you have to publicize the agenda out there, let everybody get a chance to speak. It'd be really nice if somebody had the backbone to get up and do something about this, and I have a feeling that that's one thing that's been lacking a little bit in the council. It's easier to go with...
Your time is up.
...one person's point of view rather than step up. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dennis. Any others? George?
George Warner, nine miles north of Cedar Valley. I think it would be, listening to all the comments tonight, I think one of the problems that the police department has, and the city council is the lack of respect in society, and you can't solve it with money. My suggestion is that we do like the state has done, and put a toll on, like, 494, 495, and put a toll on State Street to slow down the traffic. And then the other thing we can do is to put bumper things at all the crosswalks, that 'll slow everybody down so that when the people get a car aimed at them, the car will be airborne, maybe it can lay down the pavement and go over them. Anyway, it seems to me it's a little ridiculous to expect the police department to do all this, and they, I don't care if you have six policemen out there at night, or any time during the day, it seems like your odds of catching 70 in the act of doing some of these malfeasance things is going to be very difficult for them to do anything about it. We've got to change the culture. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anybody else for the public comment period? Okay, at this time, I will close the public comment here, period, and we'll move on to item five, possible adoption by resolution of the six-year transportation improvement plan. It's a first reading. Council, your packets are 41 to 70. I think Mark has a presentation, and this will be followed by a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me okay? I sometimes grind out a little bit here. As the mayor said, this is the first reading for the adoption, possible adoption of the 2018 to 2023 transportation improvement program. In a nutshell, this is a yearly process. The city prepares a transportation plan that's based on our comprehensive plan transportation element, which is a 20-year plan, that focuses on the next six years. We have to look in detail at three years, and also within a six-year period, we prepare individual project sheets for projects that would take place in the next six years. Those are the subject of our review tonight. We also look at the following 18, excuse me, the following 14 years to make up the full 20 years as an illustrative list for the second part. It doesn't require your action, but it is in keeping with the 20-year comprehensive plan. That tip is then, after adoption, we submit that to the NPO, the Skagit Council of Governments, who includes that in the area tip, and that goes to the state, who then submits that to the Federal Highways Division. That makes the projects basically eligible for federal and state funding. Most state funding requires that it be included in the tip, as well as any federal projects that are federal funds that we would be eligible for. Public hearing is required. This year, in response to public requests in the last couple of years, we added a step in the process and actually took the tip to the Planning Commission. There was a public hearing at the Planning Commission on June the 20th, and the Planning Commission followed that with a recommendation to council that you adopt the six-year tip as it will be presented tonight. The focus of the projects that you will see as we discuss the tip tonight are basically four. The Fruitdale Road arterial improvements project, which is the project that we have designed already and applied to funding for in 2017, but were unsuccessful, which will repair the closed section of Fruitdale north of the Northern States facility, and also add missing links to the non-motorized system on Fruitdale to connect with the Northern States facility. And it also includes an overlay for the street, it's due for that as well on the parts that are not failed. That is our primary focus project-wise, major project-wise. Beyond that, we are beginning the process for what we're calling the Jones-John Leiner Trail Road corridor projects. These are a series of projects that we are implementing or studies for, that we hope to take place over the next decade or so, that would create an alternative east-west of arterial for Highway 20, on the north side of Highway 20. It would go down basically what is John Leiner Road and via a new undercrossing through the railroad, the elevated rail tracks there, connect to Jones Road, and then by extension of Trail Road to F and S grade, and onto Jones Road, back to Cook Road. That's a multi-million dollar project that would take place over that time period we're showing there. Council has authorized, as you know, some funds for a scoping study for that particular project, which we will begin the process of selecting a consultant for that later this year. Also, in the short term, we received some funding to add non-motorized improvements and a widening for SR 20 between Township Street and Fruitdale Road. That's in the tip for 2018. That project is one that we have shifted from the longer-range tip to this one with the advent of those funds that we received from the Skagit County Economic Development Fund with their recent grant process. And finally, we also received funding through the Council of Governments Surface Transportation Program to do some intersection improvements at SR 20 and SR 9 North, the township signalized intersection. Basically, it would add a right-hand turn pocket on the Janicki logging side, which would be the northeast quadrant, and also on the, on the side to the southeast as well, and make dedicated left turns possible on three of the legs that do not currently have that motion. We have, as you, as you've heard me say, we have, and I no doubt have experienced, that intersection during the peak hours tends to back up quite a ways on Highway 20, and this is designed to allow that intersection to operate at an acceptable level of service for the next 20 years. And the secondary focus during this period of time, and really ongoing, is to do maintenance on our existing arterial system. We've been fairly successful, as you know, at picking up funds from the Transportation Improvement Board to overlay arterials. We've done about every other year a major arterial overlay project, Ferry being the most recent, and the last piece of Township from Waldron to Highway 20 last year. And so you'll see in the tip that I've created a slot with actual projects proposed for about eight years, and then beyond that, just a placeholder for arterial maintenance projects through the 20-year window. This is a case where you wouldn't normally have to have overlay projects in the tip from a federal funding standpoint, but because our main source of funds for those other than local is that the Transportation Improvement Board, they do require that it's in the tip, so that's why I show them on here. Okay, this particular figure is out of the 2016 update of the transportation plan, the comprehensive plan. I have updated a little bit, but this, this particular one shows projects on the state highway. There are two projects that we have added this year to the state projects, they're a little hard to see, but I have two shown down there, and I can't read the numbers, they're S15A and B or something like that. What those are, those are, we call them the SR 20 West Lane Widening and Safety Improvements Project, and what those are designed to do is add a center turn pocket, or turn lane out in the vicinity of Life Care and, and the other things like the old Cedar Valley Auto, those parts of that, where if you're coming in there during the peak hours again, and someone decides to make a left turn into the Life Care, that can back traffic up quite a ways. And we actually have a pretty high accident rate on that section, so we've added those two projects in to seek state and federal funding for that over the next 20 years. They're not in the six-year tip, but they're in the 20-year. Other than that, all of the other projects you see are as they've been for the last few years in the tip. And this particular exhibit here is out of the 2016 transportation plan, it shows the local arterial projects. This is the same as it appears in the transportation plan. The one project that I've added appears in this, this modification of that. We have started planning for adding a section to Cook Road from Highway 20 to Metcalf Street, and we've named a project for that purpose and added it in. Now, this project is not in the six-year tip, so you won't be acting on it tonight from that aspect, but we do have it in the 20-year as an illustrative project so that we can start planning for that. And that, that particular project will make that roundabout, make a little more sense, that east leg on that that currently goes into the fence of the Skagit Plant. And we are in discussions with the owner of the Skagit facility about this project. Okay. I put this one up, this particular one up, this is the impact fee eligible projects. Basically, it's a combination of the state and the local ones, and it shows the new projects that I mentioned to you, which would include the one on Cook Road Extended and the two projects out on Highway 20. We will later this year be bringing a update to the transportation part of the comprehensive plan, we do that annually, and those projects will be added in, and at that time, I'll bring to you this particular thing to modify our impact fee schedule to add in those two projects. So, just some items of interest on this, kind of to highlight the changes from the last year's version of the tip to the new one. We moved, as I already mentioned, project S6A and B, the SR 20 East Lane Widening and Safety Improvements Project from the longer-range tip to the six-year tip, and that will actually be in the part that you adopt, should you choose to do that. And again, it's partially funded by Skagit County Economic Development Grant Funds. I'll also be submitting a tip, I mean, excuse me, a Transportation Improvement Board grant request to provide the remaining funds that we need to complete this particular project. That project will also support the work that you're seeing going on for the Cascade Plaza development that is being done between Township and Ferry on the north side of Highway 20. It will also support the Swift Center development that we're talking about, and it will complete a section of our non-motorized system that's currently lacking on that part of Highway I've also moved project S14C, which is the Cascade Trail West Extension Phase 2A, Holt Camp Road to Hodgham Street, from the longer-range tip to the shorter-range tip, and the reason for that, this project also received STP funding through the SCAG, Council of Governments. Those funds do not go green until 2023, but that's within the six-year tip, so I've added it, or moved it from the longer range to the shorter-range tip, so we can start planning for that. And I also did a couple of administrative changes. The Fruitdale Road project that I had already talked about was previously shown as construction year 2017, we're now showing that as 2018. And I also revised the construction years for various other projects. Most of them are just moved a year or two, representing how funding has actually transpired since the last go-around on this. These are, as you can probably understand, are the best guess that we have for when these things will be funded, and it changes year by year. I've also added in, as I mentioned, the paver projects in the longer-range tip. And I think I pretty well, oh, one other thing, we had a project C32, which was titled the Third Street Sidewalk Project. I've renamed that the 2018 Sidewalk and ADA Ramp Upgrade Project. We actually have this project funded, and it was our plan to build that in 2017. We may still do that, but we've been facing the reality that our, our staff is pretty busy with the projects underway and the success we've had already with funding, so, but I do want to report tonight that I am in negotiations with a consultant, and if I can get a price that we can live with, and within our budget, I'll be coming back to you at the first meeting in July with a proposal to move forward with this project this year as was originally planned. I've also simplified the naming of several, and project descriptions for several projects, minor changes mostly, and in the tabular version of the tip, those are shown in italic type if you're interested in any details. And of course, the completed projects, Jamison Arterial, Ferry Street Overlay, the Cascade Trail projects that are currently under construction drop off the tip because they are funded and underway. The 2017 to 22 tip had 17 projects, the 2018 to 23 tip, that's the subject of this review tonight, has 19 projects listed in it. And this, I know you can't read this, it's in your packet, and it's available on our website, is the tabular version. There is a column, oops, sorry. Let's see, there. There is a gray column, if you look at that, that shows the previous scheduled year, and then the current scheduled year, it's mostly changed by a year or so, as I mentioned. And there are two pages to that. Then we also, as I mentioned, have the 2023 to 37 illustrative projects shown, there's a few changes there, I've mostly mentioned those. Project S15A and B are the added projects on Highway 20 for lane widening on the west part of town. I've added a named overlay project on North Reed Street, I've broken up that into two segments. Project one appears in the previous version, I've added a project two for that as well because of size. And, and then I added an additional 10 annual overlay projects as placeholders, as I mentioned. Most of them are not named, I did name one. And then project C38 is the one, the Cook Road Arterial Extension that I mentioned to you from SR 20 to Metcalf, that's a new project to the, to the longer-range tip. And there are some other minor administrative changes that appear. In the 2022 to 36 tip, there were 25 projects. In the 23 to 37 project, there's a total of 29 projects. So that's pretty much my presentation on this, I'd be glad to address any questions that you have. And again, this is the first reading tonight, so no action is required.
Thank you, Mark. Counsel, have any questions for Mark at this time?
No.
Okay, well, if I haven't told you lately, I really appreciate having you, because I would not want to have to keep track of all of that myself, I would be incapable. That's great, thanks for that. So at this time, we will open the public... So at this time, we will open the public hearing on this topic. If you care to speak on the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, the 2018 to 2023 Plan, you'll have three minutes at the podium. We'll open the public hearing at 7:30. Any takers? Okay, Randy. And Randy was good because he is Randy Good and also because he signed up like you're supposed to. Thanks, Randy.
You're welcome. My name is Randy Good. I'm president of the Friends of Skagit County, address 35482 State Route 20, Cedar Woolley. On June 20th, as Mark mentioned, I had a public hearing with the county or city planning commission, and I put a letter to the planning commission into the record at that meeting. That letter should have been included in the package that was sent to the council members, but apparently wasn't. That letter was not on, put onto the web page either for council or public review. And maybe next time, that should have been done this time, but let's look at that a little carefully. I also wanted to address some concerns on the public process. At that, included at that, the city planning commission meeting, they had, the staff apparently put the wrong, and then posted the wrong memo onto the planning commission's agenda, agenda, what they call agenda and information webpage. So these oversights should be corrected and in order to give the citizens a chance to, you know, review this stuff and give comments on it. Skagit County, on their six-year TIP process, actually has an open house. And before it ever goes to the, to the city, I mean, the county planning commission, and then after a public hearing with the county planning commission, then it goes to the county commissioners for a hearing there. So at these open house, the public can actually bring some ideas for new projects forward at that time, present them to the staff. The staff can review them. Maybe it's just, and it has happened at the county. And actually, that's the only opportunity that the public has a chance to be involved and review what's coming forward and give that ideas on what needs to be done. So my question is, where is the opportunity for Cedar Woolley citizens to bring forward any new projects? Then I ask, please consider to place top priority in our school districts, transportation safety projects, sidewalks, and ADA requirements. STP funding and TAP funding used on city streets, sidewalks, and paths can also be used to fulfill safety projects, sidewalks, and ADA requirements that are imposed upon our school district. Tax dollars earmarked for education should only be used for education.
About 30 seconds, Randy.
There seem to be plenty of this funding available, especially when we see paths going up all over the place alongside and right next to existing designated United States Bicycle Route 10, a path from Anacortes to the Idaho border using Highway 20. In June 2014, all of Highway 20 from Anacortes to Idaho border with, along with 172 miles in and around Skagit County was officially designated U.S. Bicycle Route 10.
Okay, your time's up, Randy.
It should be noted in the council resolution about the...
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Thank you. You're good. Here, I'll pass one down. Anyone else for the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. Murray, you're signed up. Oh, okay.
I have a question. Sorry.
Oh, we have time for discussion, just about the public hearing. Okay, at this time, Mary, are you interested in the public hearing?
Yes, I have a question. I'm sorry, Mary Anderson, 928 Beach, who wrote, "I have a question about this. It appears that it's going to be costing the taxpayers of Cedar Woolley eight, over eight million dollars for these projects, and I'm wondering where the funding is coming from."
The little part of the funding is generally from three sources. The main ones being GMA impact fee funds from new development that are designated for arterial expansions, from the transportation benefit district, which we have about $190,000 a year coming in from that source. That's a primary source for us now. And we also have some gasoline tax funds that we can use for that. It's a rather minor part of it.
So we're not looking at another bond for the citizens to pay off in this. We're funding it through smaller, more incremental taxes that we don't see all at once on our property tax statement.
Well, the...
We see it at the gas pump.
Right. One of the, one of the primary ways that we've funded projects over the last 10 years here and actually even longer term than that, it's been state funds through the Transportation Improvement Board, their grant funds. They generally fund 80% of projects, and then the local funds make up the other 20%, which is the sources that I mentioned to you before.
I see.
And I would say that, and you'll see that if you study the spreadsheet that's in there that shows the projects, I generally allow 15 to 25% local funding for these projects. That's a pretty aggressive look at these things, but we've actually more than exceeded that. For instance, the Cook Road Realignment Project that we created, that we completed in 2014, was about a $7 million job altogether, and the local part of that was about 8%. A very minor part of that project. The Jamison Arterial Project that we just completed in the spring of this year, we have, that's about a $2 million project. The local match for that was less than $50,000. So we're leveraging the funds about as well as it can be done.
Okay.
And that's, that's the way we do things here. It's part of doing things the Cedar Woolley way as we all repeat to one another with pride. We should. We've been quite successful at leveraging dollars to further our transportation needs here in town, and that's our intention to continue that process. And that's, that's part of what the tip is about, by the way, too. We bring these projects forward for review and vetting and, yes, the projects, the process is not perfect, but there's multiple opportunities to see these things. We generally, with our projects, as you know, we have at least two public meetings with the major ones as well. So there's the tip process. When we actually get them funded, we start the design process, and we'll have the public meetings for that, for that as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
I, yes, thank you, Mark.
Mary, your time is up.
Oh, wow, he took all my time.
It's not a question-answer period, but you chose that format.
I see. Okay, that was not made clear to me earlier when I spoke before. Thank you.
Well, in that case, I'll give you an alibi if you, if you have one more.
I do. I feel like many of these improvements, rather than impacting immediate public streets right here in Cedar Woolley, are actually kind of aiming people away from Cedar Woolley. And I, I'm sad to see that so many of these improvements are not actually for the citizens within, but actually on borderline areas that are, it appears to be that they are meant to reroute traffic outside of Cedar Woolley. So I can just say, I feel a little sad by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public comment period? This is public hearing, by the way. You understand?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
For the transportation.
Yes, ma'am. Got it.
Okay, Robin Gillis, Jamison Street, Cedar Woolley. I'm here about, and unfortunately, I forgot to write down the date. I believe it's 2021 to '23 that somebody has decided they want to make Jamison Street into a three-lane road with bike lanes and sidewalks and semi-trucks running up and down my street, which they've already accomplished by having the roundabout at Highway 9. And our traffic has totally increased on that road, and there are a lot of school children that walk across that road and try to get across it. And I don't appreciate my property value going down by making a three-lane highway in front of my house because if I wanted to live on Highway 20, I would move to a house there. And I don't know why this bypassing Cedar Woolley has to be on my street. I'm only guessing because it's hooking into Railroad Avenue and going up Fruitdale Road. It's for all the businesses that everybody thinks are coming into northern state that are going to need their semi-trucks and their supplies and all their stuff to be a straightaway right up there without going through all the roundabouts, which are already being complained about that are very complicated to go through. I have a friend who used to live here. She came to visit me, and she couldn't even find my house hardly to get through all the roundabouts on Cook Road. And I don't understand why six people on a planning commission can rule my life, run my life. Do they have degrees in sociology, engineering, humanities? Do they know what they're doing when they make these decisions? And is this written in stone? Is this concrete? Or can this plan change at some point? Or am I going to be stuck with a three-lane highway in front of my house?
Would you like me to comment on that here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. It is indeed a plan. And the Jamison project that you're speaking about in particular, that's been in our comprehensive plan for at least 10 years and longer. It was here in that particular plan before I got here. So it's kind of continued along that line. Whether Jamison will ever be developed as a, as a center turn lane and two travel lane route with bike lanes and all of that, that's hard to say. It's quite a ways down the road before that, that would really come into play. And there's going to be plenty of time for folks like yourself to comment on that in the meantime. Jamison, part of the reason that was an attractive project to add the roundabout there, well, there were multiple things that led to that. Safety being a big one with the buses having to take the left turns out of West Nelson was a big factor on that. But it is already an arterial. A lot of folks down there don't really understand that, but that's, that's always been a designated arterial street because logically it connects to Minkler Road and Railroad, and that's where it goes. And quite a few people use it for that purpose. That's just the reality of what it is. There aren't that many ways that that can happen, state being the other one. State has close to 9,000 vehicles a day. Yes, there has been an increase on Jamison. We had expected some, and it's within the range of what we've talked about in this body a number of times. The traffic hasn't increased somewhat, and that's never pleasant for a neighborhood, and I understand that. But on the other hand, what that's doing is it's redistributing the traffic around town a little bit more, which, the other alternative is to eventually try to five-lane Highway 20, which is not feasible in my, in my way of looking at it from a cost standpoint.
Right.
Yes, we are taking some through traffic that way. But in the real world, the way it works, we have about 8,000 vehicles a day coming into Cedar Woolley east and west. But by the time it gets to the middle part of Highway 20, it's about 20,000 vehicles a day. The difference is local circulation. It's just folks getting to their jobs, getting back and forth, and we have to deal with that. And when I mentioned the Jones and John Liner Arterial, or corridor project, that's another way of spreading the traffic out. Most of it will be local. There will be the occasional trucks that will use that. I don't doubt that a bit. But mostly, they, they do stick to the major routes. Cook Road is a major exception on that, and I know we've had discussions with the Department of Transportation. It's possible that that might get a route change transfer at some point and become, what do you say, going to High 5. I hope that helps, but it is indeed a plan, and there is opportunity to have input on that. That's the purpose for this meeting tonight, as a matter of fact. So thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Right, well, I think they could have taken the plan off the shelf a long time ago and not kept it on there because Mink, Railroad Avenue is like a two-lane cow trial with no shoulders, and I know you have plans to develop it and put in another roundabout, but I really don't understand why all the traffic has to go through residential areas when there's all kinds of business alternatives.
Thank you, Robin. Anybody else for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so no one. I'll close the public hearing at 7:44. And as a first reading, counsel, if you have questions or issues that you want clarified, you can check with Mark. That moves us down to unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask counsel if you have questions for Mark. Go ahead.
I had a question. I don't, I guess there's so much information, I don't remember seeing on there, but I was curious if you know when that project is going to be done on that roundabout on Highway 9, the one just outside, just kind of leaving town, going north, I mean, going south, sorry.
We're done.
They were doing a, sorry?
They finished it.
Oh.
Jamison?
I thought they were doing the, no, I'm talking about, not the roundabout itself, the centerpiece, the artwork and...
Oh.
And all of that, sorry. I thought that, I thought Janicki was doing something for that. Do you know when that might be done?
You know, I really haven't heard much about that, Erin. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, there are no current plans in the works for anything like that at this time.
Okay.
There were, there were some early discussions with the school district about producing some kind of artwork for that, and that's, hasn't really gelled into anything hard as far as, as far as we know.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from counsel on this topic? Rick?
Mark, on that Third Street from Nelson to State Street, west side. The sidewalk in the 1,000 block in front of my business and their residence next door is in good condition, as is the south half of the 900 block. So it's kind of just in that 1,100 block of Nelson. But are you going to change all those existing ADA ramps to the squared-off edges rather than the gradual sloping? Is that kind of at that or, and leave the current sidewalks there alone and just do the ADA's as needed?
Yeah, this is just an infill project to take care of, and you pointed it out, the part up near State Street is the part that is in very bad shape and...
Is that going to be sidewalk in front of Mark Chat's business and the Third Street Station and things with that?
Yes, that's what that's intended to do.
So it will have curbs?
It'll have curbs and sidewalks in there instead of that just open area that's in there now.
Full-end, pardon.
Yeah. On Third Street?
Yeah.
Well, there'll be, if there's, if there's room for it, there'll be the usual, well, I can't say it'd be angled, but it'd match what's in there, in there now. This is actually just a sidewalk project. Doesn't change the road configuration any, but since the curb would be added, there probably would be room for a few spaces there. That's something that'll come out in the design details on the project.
Anything else from counsel? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. We have item six, which is pages 71 to 74 in your packet, and that is ordinance adopting term limits for members of the city council and the mayor. It's a second reading. And Erin, if you would want to review that for us, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The only change from last version to this version is some more detail in the recitals, which are really intended to be the legislative intent for the city council. So you can see, I've identified the purpose of the ordinance, which is to maintain fresh perspectives on the city council, provide a maximum opportunity for new ideas to be presented and represented on the council. For example, maximize turnover, encourage broader participation of local government, and so on. So what this ordinance does is would provide a maximum term for members to serve on either the city council or as mayor of two consecutive four-year terms. So if you, if you're elected for a term, you would be eligible to be elected for a second term. Once that's completed, you would no longer be eligible to hold that office. So that would be either city council regardless of your award designation or separately mayor. So a council member that serves eight years could then run for mayor, serve up to eight years. And there's also the quirk that if you happen to be appointed for the position, that you could be appointed for, I think the most you could be appointed for is just under two years. And then you could serve for an additional two four-year terms as it's currently drafted. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from counsel?
You know, if you serve two years consecutive terms as a council member, then anybody on the council that wants to run for mayor can, right?
Correct.
That's right. That's right. When I started, when I made this motion, it wasn't done properly. It's because I'm kind of new on the job, and I didn't know, but I'm sure it'll come up again down the road. But I appreciate the Skagit Valley Herald. I got a lot of publicity in that paper. It's too bad I'm not running for office this year. And I had a lot of comments, good comments, so thank the Herald if he's here, but next time, it'll be done properly. So, that's all I have to say.
I'd like to make a comment before we vote.
There's no motion, so you can comment.
I just, I appreciate Councilman Owen's idea. However, it appears to me that the system is working. We had, Councilman Owen himself beat out an incumbent in the last election. We have an election here every two years. We have, I think actually what I consider tribal wisdom on the council when you have people who have longevity. We've actually noticed within our work sessions when there are projects or ordinances that we are looking at, that it is so helpful when somebody has already been a part of that discussion or a part of that project. I think it gives us leverage and it gives us wisdom. So I think it's important that we kind of maintain the status quo. I think the system is working. We are a very progressive council in that we have four women who are sitting on this council. We're the first in Skagit County to do that. We have more women who are running for the council. I think that's amazing. And I just find that the system is actually working. And as far as I'm concerned, we do have term limits and it's called an election.
You know what? That's what all the senators and congressmen say in Washington DC. Working perfect, but it ain't perfect.
Well, not all of them.
I'd like to make a comment, sir.
Jermaine, you have the floor?
Well, sorry, I was gonna say, so this is very, very local. This is nothing to do with national elections. It is so local that we elect our council members by ward, and in those wards, there are maybe eight hundred voters. And out of those eight hundred, you know, some of them may work nights, some of them may be single moms, perhaps some have felons, some, you know, you never know. Some are not interested. And so that, the pot is really small. And now, there are no, as far as I know statewide, there are no city council, there's, how many two other cities that?
Well, there are four cities with term limits, but only two that are non charter code cities. And I apologize, I didn't say this earlier and I didn't put it in the memo. You had asked me last time to find out if the cities of Edgewood and Port Angeles are elect council members by ward or at large, and the answer is they elect at large.
Right. So that's a big point, is that we elect by ward because we know our neighbors who are electing us. And I think that's really important and also stands with exactly the point that Julie just made.
Any other comments? Is there any action? Hearing no motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
You have the floor?
Um, I say that we take a vote and see how the council stands on this, to either implement it or not implement it.
So your motion is to implement or not implement?
Not implement. I heard you say.
If there's no motion, it dies. If there's a motion, we vote on it.
Then I pull my motion.
Hearing no motion. All right.
No motion? I thought we had a motion, the second did not really.
No, that was out of order. You may make a motion now if you so choose.
No, I'll let it go. I did it all wrong. It was kind of a process that was backwards, so.
Okay, hearing no motion.
I'll bring it up at a later date.
We pass to item seven. Arts Council Cedar Willie, request by Corianne Jensen, who is vice president. And do we have an introduction on this, or Corianne, you're just gonna speak to your cause?
I'll just speak.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Corianne Jensen. I live at seven three nine Sack Road here in Cedar Willie. I am the vice president of Arts Council of Cedar Willie. And we would like to host an art in the park and community talent show event Sunday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, at Riverfront Park to showcase and promote the diverse talents of people of all ages in our community. We would also like to invite any community groups to join us, such as the high school wrestling team possibly doing their awesome Curly Five fundraiser, and we're also up for other suggestions. We would like to have art in the large pavilion and on the lawn and an all ages talent show at the amphitheater. We'd also like to have food vendors and art in the lawn. We'd also like to have asylum auction to raise money towards the many projects that we have going on. If anyone would like to donate any items or services to our auction, please let us know. Some of the accomplishments that the Arts Council has had recently is we've implemented an Art Does It program, which has brought art to all kids K through six in Cedar Willie schools. We've also worked with the solid waste department, painting a dumpster and a recycle bin for the skate park. A couple of years ago, to beautify downtown, we also unfortunately had poor quality downtown banners that we had put up, which we would like to replace, which is one of the reasons we were doing this fundraiser. And the banners would be up between Lago Rodeo and the end of the year, just to keep downtown beautiful. We created coloring pages inspired by the Cedar Willie area and history, which are available at the museum and the Chamber of Commerce for ten dollars, to promote people local to go and explore the museum and get kids interested in Cedar Willie history and art. And we're also donating some of those pages to the Inspire Church Backpack Program that they're gonna be putting together this summer for some of the student center, school district. I've also been maintaining an inventory of downtown art, including the chainsaw carvings and murals, and addressing the need of restoration and preservation so people can enjoy the history and nostalgia of a very beautifully unique town for years to come. I'm also looking for grants and donations to help us maintain that. I have a few questions. Would the city be willing to waive the fees associated with the rental of Riverfront Park on August twenty-seventh so we can bring this event to our community? Also, is the sound system included with the amphitheater rental? What time can we use the park? Like an afternoon running through five, like one PM to five PM or two PM to six PM? Do we need any insurance to put on this event? And would the city or Chamber of Commerce be willing to add the event to the city calendars? If anyone's interested in participating or donating any items, please contact me or sign up a note sheet in the back for further information.
Corianne, thank you. So that was a lot of different issues, but I think the most important one probably to start off with is the waiver of fees. Now, I'm allowed to waive fees for community things at the senior center, but it's up to council if they wanna waive fees at the park. So that would require a motion by council to waive fees for this event. And then I think some of the other details about how long and when can probably be worked out later.
Sure.
And I would say thank you for all the work you put into this on the Arts Council.
Thank you. I make a motion, I make a motion that we waive the fees for this project, arts at the park.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, municipal code twelve thirty-six oh two five allows the council to waive fees for community events sponsored and authorized by the council. So it's a, if the motion could be tailored a little bit differently to essentially be a motion to sponsor the art council event and authorize the use of Riverfront Park free of charge, I think that would be more compliant with our code.
Okay. I make a motion that we sponsor, that we, city council sponsor and sponsor the, sponsor the event and, Arts Council event and authorize use of Riverfront Park.
Free of charge.
Free of charge.
For this event.
A second.
Okay, there was a waste to second that. The motion was made by council member Carnegie and seconded by council member Kinzer to sponsor the Cedar Willie Arts Council and the Art for the Park Project and waive fees at Riverfront Park. Is there any further discussion on this? All the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? There, you have your answer, and I'm sure we can work the details out. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Yeah, and on those other, on those other questions, Corianne, you wanna reserve with the finance department, so you could come in tomorrow, get it in the book, that hours are the same regardless of a city event or non-city event. We do not have a sound system, but can provide the power so you can have a sound system. And yes, insurance will be required.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Corianne.
Okay, moving on. Item eight, ordinance amending the Cedar Willie Municipal Code to include a no drinking, drinking in public as a crime. That's page seventy-five to seventy-seven. Is this Chief Tucker or?
No, I'll take this one. So the short memo was pretty self-explanatory. It turns out you can wander down the streets drinking anything without it being a crime today. And this ordinance would specifically prohibit, serves, a person is, would be guilty if they serve, consume, possess in an open container any beer, wine, malt liquor, or other alcoholic beverage on any street, sidewalk, or alleyway unless authorized by a valid permit issued by the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board for service and consumption of alcohol at that location. And the beer, wine, malt liquor, or other alcoholic beverages provided by the permit holder pursuant to the permit. So that language right there is the operative language of this rule. This is, this proposed law, this is the current status of alcohol consumption in the city's parks. So contrary to popular belief, that's not entirely outlawed, it can be, it can be allowed pursuant to an appropriate banquet permit with the approval of the city. This would provide the same restrictions, so the beer garden that happens during a special event, for example, the blast from the past, this year I think it happened on private property, but in years past has happened in a city street. The, there was a beer garden at the Liberty Bistro that was held in an alleyway during the blast. You know, that would still be allowed under this ordinance because of the exemption for the permitting through the cannabis and liquor board. Same thing with the woolly markets, you know, a beer corral out on the sidewalk, or the Liberty Bistro if they were to have one, or anybody else for that matter, who has a permit to do that. So, pretty narrowly tailored, it does not apply to bottled water or anything other than beer, wine, malt liquor, or other alcoholic beverages. Cannabis is actually illegal under state law to puff out in public. We've got the down low law in Washington. It's legal, but not legal if you see it.
Okay, so is there any time pressing issue on this?
As a first reading, it's certainly no time issue.
So council, it's a first reading?
Discussion.
Yeah, you want some discussion? Let's go.
Just a comment or?
You have the floor?
Or so to?
Into the mic, please.
I guess this comment would be for Chief Tucker, that concerts in the park specifically, you know, it's a city park, but I'm willing to say that probably at least a third of those people attending that are quietly drinking wine or beer while in attendance at those concerts. We'd be all over that, I don't know. So how much teeth is this gonna give to you guys to be wandering down there watching somebody slowly?
Let me just jump in, though. This ordinance would have no effect on concerts at the park, right? This only applies to streets, sidewalks, and alleys.
Well, it already says, though, that it is for...
Currently, drinking in the parks is not allowed unless with a permit. So that, so I just wanna make clear that this does not have any effect on, you know, that's already in place. This doesn't change that.
And it wouldn't change anything we're doing now anyway. This is really going to address the person who goes and buys a single and goes and sets in front of a business and guzzles it down. That's what's really...
And then rolls the bottle into the curb and breaks it and laughs and has another.
But we don't know anybody like that.
So you'll leave the responsible drinkers in the park alone then, huh?
Yeah. Are you concerned?
Yes.
No comment.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council? So we'll bring it back next time. Okay, committee reports. Chief Tucker?
So we just took a delivery of our second new car for this year. I think we've got, what, two or three more iterations and we'll have all of the old...
Two more of yours.
Two more and we'll have all of the old cars rotated out, have the new SUVs rotated in. We got it down to a science. We get them in one day, they get down to the science shop to get the white door cover and then their, and the stickers, and they're off to Glenn, and in about two days, he gets us outfitted. So we're getting rid of some of the older cars. We got a couple of them that have got some serious problems, but we also, I believe it's in council packet this time on a surplusing a car. The school district needed a car with a cage.
That was last time.
That happened.
I was hiking, so I missed that one.
Yeah, we approved that.
You got that one approved, so we're putting the cars to good use. They're gonna use that well. We had a surprise employee gave notice and then left suddenly, and we're in the process of looking for new hires. We've done, we've started re-upping our list from public safety testing, and hopefully by, in the next month or so, we'll have everything we need to do to hire a new person. And we're putting out the word that we're looking for experienced officers as well as new hires, so I'm kind of excited about getting some new people in. Our brandest newest people that we got have worked out outstanding, and we'd kind of like to try that some more. We did a sergeant assessment center yesterday. That was put on by public safety testing. They come down and they have a series of proven questions and processes that they've tested and tried in court to make sure they cover, that we're not violating anything by our, I guess, promotional processes. We had three candidates apply for that. One of them applied to get a little bit of experience, but the other two were really neck and neck. We'll make the official announcement after I've talked to all three of them, but we're gonna be having, we do things a little bit differently. I was talking to the Mountmorean chief, he's going through the same thing, and he'll be doing the processing. It'll probably take him a month to go through the process. It'll take him a month to go through the interviews after that and decision making, and then probably a month or two after that before they actually promote. We did our testing yesterday. I talked to two of the candidates today. I'll talk to the third one, or have the sergeant talk to the third one tonight. We'll make the announcement tomorrow and they'll put on stripes on Saturday. We're that sure what we're getting into. So we're gonna have another sergeant working the road and rotating back to night shift here real soon and kind of relieving the one sergeant that's carrying the burden. We're getting geared up for the Fourth of July, a lot of overtime, a lot of chasing firework complaints and that kind of thing. We're hoping at some point it'll rain that night after the fireworks. That is the best, that is the best and safest solution for us and the fire department. And just this last, and I'm sorry, Jermaine, we missed you on the Samish school training for the table, for the exercise. We have our next active shooter big exercise going on in August, and I can send those dates to Erin and he can send them out to council if anybody's interested in checking out what we're doing. We've been doing all the tabletop exercises for active shooter and active hazards, and now we're putting in practice. The next... The next exercise, like I said, will be in August, and it'll be a big one at the high school. And we're going to carry on that. Hopefully, my plan is later on this year, I know Aaron's got somebody looking into our emergency plans for the city. I'm going to try to offer a community-based thing where we pass some of that information out to people who are just interested in things to do in case of an emergency. What happens if we have an earthquake and the dam cracks and we start getting flooding? What do we do if we have, you know, something that cuts off all the power, you know, a natural disaster, we have something, you know, bad happen, an active shooter? What are the kind of things you need to do to keep yourself safe? And we're going to be planning that later on this year. And it'll be more of a community-based event, and have you all involved or invited as well. And as soon as they get those dates, I'll let you know. That's all I have here.
Thank you, Chief. Tom?
Yes, as he said, we've been doing a lot of the active shooter training. What's, is kind of new is, of course, is in the past, the Fire Department were kind of waiting until everything is completely safe, but of course, practices have shown, you know, that, well, incidents have shown it's better for us to actually be escorted in to police. We're, you know, it's not 100% safe yet, but we're being escorted in to rapidly treat those that are injured and then get them out as rapidly as possible with the escort of the police. So, we're working together on these incidents where before it was, they run the show, and then it's all safe, and now then we run the show. But, so now we're kind of working together, hopefully, and I think it has shown that this actually saves lives, so. Our crews are going to be out testing hydrants all summer, so they'll be starting that here shortly, so you might see them out there turning the, taking the caps off and testing them. And once in a while, the, some of the hydrants, because they haven't been worked, they will have a little bit of flow still on them. They, you know, we generally get a couple complaints or notifications that some hydrants are leaking, and we can go out and address those accordingly, and hopefully just turn the valve off a little tighter, or, because how they work is if it's just open a tiny, tiny bit, it's still, it can still, water wants to drain out the bottom still, so water's going to seep up around it. So, and that might be in the port itself, but, so. So, the crews will be out doing that. We have a Fire Academy that we should be starting in mid-August, who will be coming up. We have several in-house cadets will be in it, and then we have, we'll be opening up to a county-wide, bring in some other candidates, cadets from the county, other districts. Of course, that's going to be run with the Firefighters Association, and so the fees will, and the, they'll be, the firefighters will get paid through the association and stuff. So, it's been, we've done two or three of these like this, and it's been very successful. So, that's it.
Mark?
Yes, as you've hardly noticed, as you've driven around town, we've got the streets torn up in a few places. The Highway 20 work is coming along well, no major issues so far. They've completed the sidewalks from Hodgins to about Lorenzo's, that vicinity, and are putting the storm drain in. They got as far as Trail Road today. That'll be it for the major mains for this week. They'll be working tomorrow, yet putting some catch basin runs in. And after the Fourth, they'll close the Trail Road intersection and go across that street. Trail will be closed and detoured for about two days. Also, we have a separate contractor, the crack ceiling contractor, started on the Cook Ferry Roundabout work today. That went pretty well. Not as fast as we had hoped, but they did get about a quarter of it done. They'll be back tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get most of the rest of it done. I do anticipate they'll probably go over at least a day on that at this point, just seeing how that's going so far, and it's just related to how quickly or not quickly the ceiling material sets up. So, other than that, we're designing the sewer project, the liner project, and we hope to have that out in the next 30 days or so. Nathan's crews have been very, very busy working on preparations for the chip ceiling. We've gotten some sort of discouraging news from the county. They're so far behind on their chip ceiling projects that they're not going to be able to do all the streets we had planned. It's good in a sense, because we are going to use the budget to go ahead and do overlays on a couple of the streets we were just going to chip seal, so I'm sure folks won't mind that very much. We won't be able to do quite as much, but we'll stay busy and get as much of our list done as we can. And I mentioned earlier that I'm working on TIB applications. We'll be submitting three, and I'll bring that back to you for your approval to submit those and update the match requirements and where we anticipate those funds coming from. Fruitdale Road arterial project, the sidewalk I mentioned on the north side of 20 from Township to Fruitdale, and then another overlay project. This is the same one we tried for last year, State Street from Highway 20 to Fourth Street. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
We've got a few items tonight, as the chief alluded to. I did sign a contract earlier this week with Christos Linus Consulting to perform the work on our emergency plan. So, it's intended to be a two-phase project. We actually budgeted to do both phases in 2017, but getting a late start. So, Phase One, which is where we're currently at with the contract, would get the plan created. That would take us through the end of the year. And then assuming we're able to continue that budget support in 2018, Phase Two would be to train to the plan, and we're thinking of at least, at least two training components, one probably being a tabletop that's scheduled, would include all of the players, and the second being the more practical, actual emergency where we don't schedule it, it's a surprise at an inconvenient time on an inconvenient day with no notice, and we just see what happens when we have an earthquake. And then, of course, we follow up with, you know, reconvening everybody, those who are there and those who weren't, so we can learn from that particular exercise. So, two phases this year would be the plan, and expect to have that completed by the end of the year. Also, working on the AFSMI City Joint Compensation Study. We've now interviewed four sister cities. We've got six more to go. I want to remind you of the primary election candidate forum that the city's hosting here on July 19th. Don Wick has agreed to help us again this year, so he'll be moderating identical format to the last forums. Notices are going out at all of the utility bills next week, so we've got, I don't know, 4,000 of those being mailed to residents. It's on Facebook. It's been shared with the newspaper. Usually, we've had, I think we've had 100% candidate turnout at our events so far, and usually a pretty, pretty full house. So, questions will be asked by the audience through the moderator, just as always. Senior Center project, we've got some not great news on that. So, we went out to bid, as the council authorized on the revised scope, to reconfigure that whole skylight. We had a, an estimate of $22,000 going into that process. We received two bids, and they ranged from a low bid of $38,712 to a high bid of $59,633. The recommendation to the council, and unless there's objection, this is how we intend to proceed, is to reject those bids and go back to the drawing board to figure out what we can do at that building to serve our users within our budget. And then the last item I wanted to call your attention to is the Swift Center. Lots of great progress up there. The port has now moved their intended transition date to one year from this month, so June of 2018, for acquisition of the entire site. I think the last time we discussed this, the time was uncertain, and we were looking at phasing. They're looking at the whole enchilada in June of 18. They've moved into a new office up there, a project office, and one of these days in the not-too-distant future, you'll see the Swift Center logo on the front of it, with the Port of Skagit's logo by the door, and a nice facility where meetings are being held today. For example, we had a great kickoff meeting that included a variety of stakeholders to talk about trails and trail connectivity going from, through the city, from the city to the Swift Center, to the Skagit County Northern State Recreation Area, and even into the back country. Some really interesting ideas coming out about how that could be a regional trailhead to get people launched out to some pretty exciting recreation opportunities. And then on the Swift Center, don't forget that on August 10th, the city, the port, and the county are having a joint special meeting, August 10th, 10:30 a.m. in Mount Vernon. So, the purpose of this meeting will be twofold, and you will get a special meeting notice soon. It's going to have two items on the agenda that I'm aware of. One will be a Swift Center project update, and two will be to receive the Governor's Smart Communities Award for this project. That's all I've got.
Well, that's plenty.
That's what I thought.
Patsy?
Council in your packets is a report on income, excuse me, impact fees by the different types, showing the balance and the intended use of those funds. Also attached to those are more detailed schedules showing revenue and expenditures since 1998, which is the beginning of impact fees, through the end of last year. If you have any questions about those reports, just ask me after the meeting, and I'd be glad to attempt to explain them. We're unfortunately beginning 2018 pre-budget work, so that we're ready to go when budget season officially hits. And in the Finance Department, we've received numerous notices the past couple weeks from various state agencies outlining their plans for services provided to cities, which translates to money coming from those agencies to the city, as well as possible contract terminations or pauses depending upon the state budget passing. So, I kind of look at this and I think, look at all this time, all this staff time involved in figuring out, what are we going to do if the budget doesn't pass? So, I'm hopeful that the news that I heard today, that, you know, we think we have a solution, is true, and that we really have a budget forthcoming.
Thank you. Judith?
Oh, I spent two and a half exciting days down in Vancouver, the original Vancouver in Washington. Definitely pointed out to us at the AWC Annual Meeting, and I learned quite a few things, and I got lots of swag.
Did you bring enough for everybody?
Pens.
Thanks. Anything else? Jermaine?
That's it. Okay. I had a couple things going on. So, like, last meeting, I mentioned that I was doing a special on opiate use in our county at our Community Action, and I'm on the board, but I also went to the special luncheon presentation, luncheon learn that they do, changing the tide of opiate use in Skagit County. And I got, I'm not very organized, here's my notes, but I have some bullet points on there that I thought were really important, that are, that could change these numbers. The numbers are pretty alarming. As I mentioned before, the needle exchanges between March of 16 and June of 16, 70,000 needles exchanged, and the reason they collect those needles like that is so that they can have a person-to-person contact and be able to get that person some help, instead of just dropping them off is a better, is a better plan. It's about the contact. And they're really trying to focus on the drugs that are out in our, just painkillers out in the open in people's cabinets, and doctors are prescribing too much, and they're working on that now and making it to where people are getting just enough for a few days at a time, so that there's not a whole lot left over. That's a big problem that they're on to. Our new coroner, our new Skagit County coroner, has been helping with those numbers by, she's now doing toxicology reports, which weren't being done before, and so we know just how much, how big the problem actually is, how many people are overdosing. And I think that's going to change a lot in these studies. And that Narcan saves four, saves a life every four to five days in our county, and I think that's huge. Anyway, I learned a lot, and I'm still learning more. I, it's a big issue, so I'm going to continue to do that. Another thing is I've been working on really trying to get us to recycle more for our, especially during our parades and everything and during these big events, and just at least making an effort. And so, I called the county transfer station, they have, there's a program called Zero Waste, and it doesn't cost a thing, and we'll set up, I have to get ahold of the Parks Department, you know, figure out where we're going to put them and whatever, but there'll be displays of recycling bins, and they'll be very articulate as to what goes where, and it doesn't cost anything as long as somebody sets them up and somebody takes it back. And I'm willing to do that myself, but I was going to talk to our Parks Department. I know they're overly swamped, and who else would be willing to help, just like, transfer? But, anyway, just look for those, please, and let's get it, let's get it going. That's it.
Well, big thanks again to Mark and your department for completing the speed bump. Again, it is slowing traffic down so much, and I can't wait to see how the neighborhood's going to react when school starts and sees what a big difference it's making in people. It's going to be so much safer, so thank you again. On the issue of fireworks, yeah, there's a lot going on with fireworks. And I know it's probably everywhere. It always sounds like it's only in your neighborhood when it's going off. I suspect, some of the people in the neighborhood suspect there's Tannerite going on, too, because you hear the gunshot, and then the big boom, which is a little more scary if there's firearms involved, so, I don't know. Do you have any insight on that, Chief Tucker?
Never underestimate the stupidity of people. So, it's probably, it's likely, but then again, there's a lot of those, those things that they can go right up to the rez, buy them, and they're all illegal to use off the reservation. So, I mean, it could be M80s, they sound like a gunshot. Tannerite is easy to get ahold of, that stuff's nothing but explosive. All that stuff's real easy to deal with. It's, and we're living right next to a fireworks stand right outside of town, and that's where it's all coming from.
Yeah.
Almost everything that comes down here is illegal. If it goes up and blows up, it's illegal.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Julia?
Oh, just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth, and hopefully a fairly quiet Fourth.
Chuck?
I just have a couple of things for the chief. Something that, I know his list is so small, he needs a couple more things to do. But anyway, there's more and more of these little cars running around town that's lost their mufflers. And I mean, they're super noisy, and I know you can't work miracles, but seems like if they had a ticket or two once in a while, there is an ordinance against noise, right?
There's a noise ordinance about, it's kind of up to interpretation a little bit. It's that unnecessary, I think the exact language is unnecessary rapping, you know, it's when they're, they're making it louder than it needs to be. Some of that is just, I mean, some of the vehicles, some of the big diesel trucks, you know, the drive-through, they're kind of loud. I know those aren't what you're talking about. It's those irritating little things that look like they have a coffee can or a muffler. And, but, we've got, I mean, we have a bigger problem. We have, you know, people still talking on their cell phones, distracted drivers, and that's going to become a bigger issue really soon. Dennis was right, we got people...
Dennis was right, we got people, crosswalks are merely a suggestion. I'm shorthanded a little bit. We've actually, when we've got the ability to, I guess, point somebody right at doing some of these things like what you're talking about, we're real successful. I mean, you guys have probably seen and heard stuff that Dan Eddy's been doing with the trucks, with the commercial vehicles, and I think that's making a difference. But as soon as we get to the point where we can do some of this stuff, something changes and...
It's not so much the trucks, it's those little cars, Honda cars and stuff, the kids are...
The ones with the weird wheels that stick out sideways.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
And it used to be the thumping music, now they can't even hear their own music over their weird sounding cars. But I'll pass it on to my patrol.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Chuck? Rick?
We just need more American muscle, don't we, Lynn?
Just that nice rumbley, throaty, big...
Long tube headers.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Fourth of July coming, carnival's rolling in, bring kids and grandkids down to the carnival, curly fries from the Steel Claw Wrestlers and burgers from the Beta Burger hamburger stand, all community service projects and things with that, so. The Eagles Club is having a car show on Sunday afternoon from noon to 6:00. On-site Beer Garden, live music, fender benders, food, barbecue, benefit, the Boys and Girls Club. The calls we've been getting, we're looking at maybe a couple hundred cars, so if the weather cooperates, could be a good day for, for car lovers, so. So enjoy the Fourth.
Thank you. So I see you guys are getting antsy, you're not going anywhere, we have executive.
We know.
So. I got a couple of things, bring your attention to a handout that Deborah dropped by, it's, there's some extras in the back at the library, they're gonna do a special on the solar eclipse, that's Thursday, July 6th, 6:30, and there's gonna be a real telescope there, so that'll be exciting if you want to join in that. I think at staff meeting she also mentioned Pacific Science Center was doing an engineering special and Teresa, do you know about that, is it the community center, or Mary?
Friday, 17.
This Friday at 11:00. Yes, Mary?
And the eclipse and we're handing out special glasses with which to wash the solar eclipse from here. So if you attend, you can get those special glasses.
Excellent. So those are two things that are, will be real fun and I appreciate the library putting that on. I want to talk a little bit about Skagit STEM Network, graduation's over, we had 10 Segroway High School seniors receive $22,500 for scholarships and I think that we should take pride in the fact that the Skagit STEM Network started out as a Segroway STEM Network and our superintendent really deserves a lot of the credit for that, also Michelle Judson who worked the program for us and Jana Hansen. So that is a ton of money that we didn't even know existed before, that's going to our kids to go in those technical areas that are so much in demand. And it started here, but it spread out over the valley, so Anticorps benefited, Burlington got some money, LaConne, Mount Vernon and the Skagit Adventist High Schools. That's a pretty long list for something that started right here in Segroway, and that makes me proud. Like Rick said, enjoy the Roga Rodeo and don't forget, it's not just the Fourth of July, it's Independence Day, so let's be joyous about that and be safe and have fun. So at this time, we're gonna go into executive session under RCWR 42.30.110, sub paragraph 1 sub B for about 20 minutes. That deals with possible real estate acquisition with possible action. So we'll do that at 8:34, we're going into session.
They could save a lot of money by turning down the air conditioning.
Okay, we're back from executive session at 8:53.
Let's do it.
We'll wait till Aaron gets his computer fired up.
Everybody settled? So we were back at 8:53 from executive on a real estate acquisition.
That's right.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city purchased a piece of property discussed in executive session for no more than $20,000.
Okay, motion was made by council member Kinzer, seconded by council member Carnegie to purchase the discussed property at a price of no more than $20,000. Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Eyes have it, without objection, we will adjourn. I see no objection at 8:55.